The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, room one, and welcome to the regular meeting of Waburn City Council, our one singular meeting here this month, held in the council chambers at Waburn City Hall, 6:00 PM, Monday, July 18th, 2022. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held June 27th, 2022. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Tonight, we are missing two members of council, Mr. Van Betje and Mr. Corrigan, but we still have a quorum, so we're moving forward. Additions to the agenda? Ms. Warren?
Thanks, your worship. There's no additions from administration tonight?
Any council? Nothing? There's no public hearings or notices, delegations, proclamations, petitions? There is none at this point in time. Reports of standing committees? There is none. Consent agenda? We have the Fire Department report, the Building Department report, casualty report, water treatment plant report, Public Works report. These will all be hosted on the Waburn City website. You can read those. Do you have a motion to receive?
Yes, your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? None? Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Council payable? Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $2,000,376,89 and 84 cents from June 24th to July 14th, 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. East Trail Asphalt Paving, Director of Leisures, Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, your worship. So in 2021, the Parks Department constructed a new granular walking path located in a green space east of Cotto Avenue, and we call that the East Trail. So that construction fits within the Tadagwa Master Plan, which calls for a paved pathway to connect the northeast loop of the Fifth Avenue Trail over by Highway 13. So following the first phase of the construction of that trail, the Leisure Services Department received $90,000 in conditional funding through the Canada Community Revitalization Fund to complete 1,982.5 meters squared of asphalt paving along that new granular pathway. So in partnership with the city engineering department, a request for proposal was designed and posted on the city of Waburn and SAS tenders websites on June 3rd with a closing date of Friday, June 17th at 1:00 PM. We received a total of four bids, as you see below. So the vendor with the lowest bid was Genko Asphalt with a bid of $80,475.03 plus applicable taxes. Following a review of the bid submitted, it's recommended that the asphalt paving of 1,982.5 meters squared on the newly constructed East Trail pedestrian pathway be awarded to Genko Asphalt Incorporated of Estevan, Saskatchewan for an amount of $80,475.03 plus applicable taxes, with all paving-related construction to be completed by no later than September 30th, 2022.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the bid of Genko Asphalt Incorporated of Estevan, Saskatchewan to provide asphalt paving of 1,982.5 square meters on the East Trail pedestrian pathway to connect the northeast loop in the amount of $80,475.03 plus applicable taxes be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Mickel?
I have a question. Thanks for the report, Andrew. Andrew, two questions. How many kilometers of path do we have in the city of Waburn now? And is there any future plan to link everything together?
Yeah, so with the additional pathway that we put in last year, and now with the asphalt going in, we'll have just about nine kilometers of pathway in the city, with the majority of that being paved pathway. There are also plans in the Tadagwa Master Plan, Master Parks Plan, to link the entire community together with a plan utilizing different types of surfaces, so whether that's asphalt or granular or soft surface or turf, grass-type pathways. We're still several years of completely linking the city together, and there's some work that would need to be done to meet that goal, but we do have that long-term plan created.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Jennings? Mr. Crowe, just given that the Genko number is so much lower than the other ones, you've worked with them before and you're confident that they can deliver at this price?
Yeah, so myself personally, I have not worked with Genko, but they have done quite a bit of work with the engineering department this year and in years past, and there were no concerns flagged with the quality of work that they do.
Excellent.
Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Lift Station 1, Hydraulic Engineering Assessment, Director of Engineering, please?
Yes, thank you. So just a little bit of background, so from May 12th to the May 13th, 2022, Waburn receives 60 millimeters, this is an Environment Canada of figure of precipitation. This excessive precipitation caused the city of Waburn's main sewage lift station, Lift Station Number 1, to experience high-level volumes of wastewater, causing for all four submersible pumps to be switched into 100% operating capacity. Even with the lift station operating at full capacity, the incoming stormwater entering the wastewater system faster than it could be pumped out to the lagoon, causing flooding of the lift station's wet well and subsequently backup conditions down the trunk sewer line along Fifth Street to Fifth Avenue North. Multiple residential, commercial, and recreational facilities experienced extensive damages caused by flooding and sewer backups. The wastewater receiving chamber at the diversion lagoon also overflowed as the outlets into the lagoon could not discharge the high volumes of wastewater fast enough, resulting in an overland spill of raw sewage. Over the May 13th event, the outlets at the diversion lagoon were cleaned out by centrifuge dredging, where over 6,000-meter cubes of solids were removed around, from around the outlets. The utilities crew also installed the diesel generator trailer pump at Lift Station 1, which could be used in place of the submersible pumps with a higher pumping capacity in the event of another high-flow event. The high-flow event happened on June 20th to June 21st, when Waburn received another 95 millimeters of precipitation. The utilities crew switched Lift 1 over to the diesel pump and obtained a couple vacuum tank trucks to increase the flow rate out of the lagoon, but could not gain on the rising water levels in the lift station's wet well. By 3:00 AM on June 21st, the water surpassed high-level alarms at the lift station, causing backwater conditions in the trunk sewer line and connecting upstream sewer systems. The city administration made the difficult decision to conduct a sewage bypass with a second, smaller diesel pump that discharged directly into the Service River simultaneously as the diesel trailer pump was discharging to the lagoon. The city administration and Waburn Police Service asked residents to reduce water consumption and nonessential water use and to discharge sump pumps outside instead of into the sewer in an attempt to increase the sewer's system capacity for the excessive stormwater. Even with the use of the additional pump and tank trucks bypassing the lagoon and the temporary water conservation order, the water levels at the lift station remained at high alarm levels for 12.5 hours, causing backflow conditions at the diversion lagoon and the main sewer lines, resulting in more flood damage to residential, commercial, and recreational facilities throughout the city. The city's main wastewater infrastructure, upstream and downstream of Lift Station 1, requires an upgrade and/or expansion to increase sewage conveyance and storage capacity for high-flow events. In order to identify all infrastructure deficiencies and prioritize areas where infrastructure could be upgraded to improve performance and eliminate bypasses, a hydraulic engineering assessment is required. The assessment will consist of a hydraulic evaluation of the flow rates and hydraulic capacity of our current wastewater system. The assessment will also include modeling to confirm the pumping and storage capacity required for a one-in-25-year, 24-hour rainfall event. The city requires the services of a qualified engineering firm to provide comprehensive, expert engineering services to provide the city with hydraulic modeling and design options and recommendations for upgrades and/or expansion of the city's main lift station and connecting sewer systems. The 2020 Utilities Budget has allocated $20,000 for water main inspections that has not been planned yet. Currently, the original technology we were looking at for water main inspections is not exactly what we thought it would be. That technology isn't where we need it to be, so we would be looking that this funding be used for this hydraulic assessment of the wastewater system. Our water main replacement program would just remain with our current model using, what we'd be using is water break data as well as age of the current water mains. So the program on how we assess water mains would not change. We still do that internally, we would just not be using the inspection technology we originally looked at. So it is recommended to immediately obtain an engineering consultant to conduct a hydraulic assessment of the city's main water system, wastewater system, in order to properly allocate 2023 funds for the required wastewater infrastructure upgrades.
Go ahead, Mr. Jennings. Your worship, I move that council apply $20,000 in funding from the 2022 Utilities Budget that was approved for water main inspections and reallocate these funds to obtain an engineering consultant to conduct a hydraulic assessment of the city's main wastewater system to assist in properly allotting 2023 funds for the required wastewater infrastructure upgrades.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead. Laura, sorry. She was quick on that.
Thank you, Councilor Richards. Jen, can you take me through the process now of what happens? Is there an RFP that's going to go out? And is there a specific amount that you can go up to that you don't have to come back to council?
Yeah, so we will look at RFP in this project, and we'll put it on SAS tenders and the city website like we normally do. Because this would be within a $20,000 range, it would not have to come back to council again should it be approved for this budget allocation, because it would be under the $30,000 amount.
Council morrisick got half my question. The other thing wasn't the question, it was more. Thank you for reacting so quickly. I know you said in here this one in 25 years, it's twice in 11 years, so I appreciate you being attentive to it. Thanks.
I kind of think you answered this question, but if you can bear with me, am I correct in assuming that there is limited risk to not doing the water main inspections in 2022?
Yeah, we still have asset management program that dictate, or kind of that guides us on how we replace water mains, so we would still be following that, and a lot of it is based on break history as well as the age of the pipe, the material of the pipe. So we'll still be using a system. We've chatted with some other municipalities on what they do for water mains replacement, and they're using the exact same thing. Nobody has found a technology that is really good for inspecting water mains, and that's why we thought we had found a technology that would be a bit better, but after doing some more consultation on it, we realized that it wasn't what we thought it was, and that we would stick with our regular asset management program.
Mr. Mickel?
Thanks again, Jennifer, very detailed description of what you're doing. This work will be done, this inspection will be done this year yet?
Yeah, so are, you mean the hydraulic assessment? Yeah, so the hydraulic assessment, we want to kick off, we have started putting details around an RFP together in hopes that we could have approved. We want to kick it off immediately, because we want to get as much work as we can right now, in hopes that we would have an idea of what we would need to do and could do those upgrades in 2023 pending budget approval.
Jennifer, in the worst-case scenario, what's to the extreme, the recommendation you think will come? Give me the worst-case scenario.
We don't have anything at that point. We, I mean, until we get in there and actually get some data and fully understand exactly how our pumps are pumping down the lines, I don't want to, I don't want to guess on that.
When you say Lift Station 1, that's a recent new one out by the museum, right?
Yes, that is Lift Station 1, but it is also our biggest lift station.
That's right.
Yeah, it's the one that connects to the lagoons.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hopefully, this will alleviate problems in the Fifth Street area, the Hartney Abbey, all these elements there. Okay. Called question? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, please?
All right, thank you. So this is related to the 2017-2018 Clean Water and Wastewater Fund projects. So under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, the federal government contributed 2.7 million, and the province, provincial government, sorry, contributed 1.3 million, with the city funding the remaining 1.3 million toward the following essential water and wastewater projects. This included upgrading approximately 3,900 water meters and replacing 50 water and sewer-led service lines, water standpipe upgrades, upgrading Water Treatment Plant 200, Water Treatment Plant security upgrades, as well as government road and Fifth Avenue Southeast water main replacements. These projects and upgrades have provided better-quality infrastructure and the services for the city of Waburn residents while meeting growth requirements for the future needs of the committee. With the projects now complete, there's a requirement of a resolution of council attesting the projects are complete or were made possible with federal funding.
Your worship, I would make a motion that it be resolved. The council attests that for the completed project under the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund program, the project incrementality has been met, and that the work would not have been undertaken without the federal funding.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Only, I think that's the first time I've ever said the word incrementality.
Definition? Definition? No, that's okay. Anyway, moving forward. Anyway, we're, okay, we're called a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I was going to get you to flip the paper over and do a spelling bee of the word, okay? That's what I was going to say, but don't ask me to do that. Okay, introduction of bylaws. Janine, if you would be, please?
Good evening, council. A zoning bylaw amendment application from Cindy Anne on behalf of the owner Savannah Energy Services Corp. has been received, which is requesting that a contract zone be approved for 325 Queen Street. The contract zone is requested to allow for a kennel for commercial breeding or boarding purposes, known as Fido's Doggy Daycare and Training Facility, to continue to operate. It's not permitted in the existing highway commercial zone for the property. A contract zone was previously approved in 2018, which has since expired, so the proponent is requesting that a new contract be approved to allow for the continued operation of the doggy daycare. So if council proceeds with first reading of the bylaw at this meeting, then public notice will be sent out in accordance with the city's public notice policy, and that is the wrong date. It would occur on August 15th, would be the public hearing. So Cindy Anne of Fido's Doggy Daycare had previously received approval for their contract zone. The contract agreement was valid for three years and has since expired and was not renewed prior to the expiry, so a new contract zone is requested. The doggy daycare continues to operate at that location, so a zoning bylaw amendment is required to continue permissions for that use. The new contract would not expire unless the kennel ceases to operate at that location. So the highway commercial zone is designed for uses serving the traveling public or uses requiring high level of accessibility. The lands are typically located adjacent to major highways and majority being uncontrolled access service roads. The zone allows for a variety of uses that are considered to be appropriate uses along the major highways. It does not currently allow for a kennel for commercial boarding purposes. This use would be found in the light, medium, and heavy industrial zones as a discretionary use. However, the property is unique that it is on the perimeter of the city with no neighboring properties directly abutting it, so there would be a minimal impact to neighboring properties, specifically residential properties. The property's zoned highway commercial are also designated highway commercial in the official community plan. There's a summary of the land's designation and applicable policies. They're located adjacent to highways 35, 39, and 13, and they typically exist on highway commercial lands would be convenience establishments. They are also used for businesses which require strongly benefit from highway access, may require significant amounts of land. The proposed contract zone is consistent with the official community plan, as the contract will allow for a use to continue to operate, and the property is unique that it does provide easy highway access and does not have any direct neighbors that could be impacted by noise or smell from the use, so it'd be an appropriate location for that use. So it's consistent with the OCP. If council gives first reading at this meeting, staff will bring the bylaw forward to the District Planning Commission for input before the final approval. So council's options would be to give first reading to bylaw 2022-3446, being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw to approve a contract zone for 325 Queen Street, to add kennel for commercial breeding or boarding purposes as a permitted use, and direct administration to advertise the bylaw as per the public notice policy, or council refuses to give first reading to the bylaw and direct administration to advise the applicant of the refusal. The reasons for refusal would have to be provided. So staff recommendation would be that council gives first reading to bylaw 2022-3446 to amend the zoning bylaw to approve a contract zone for 325 Queen Street to add kennel for commercial breeding or boarding purposes as a permitted use.
Motion? Your worship, I'm pleased to move that bylaw 2022-3446, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2020-3412, to approve a contact zone for 325 Queen Street, Block C, Plan 101466096, to be read a first time at this meeting and further, that bylaw 2022-3446 be advertised as per the city of Waburn public notice policy.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Thanks, Janine. I know you touched on it a little bit in your report, I just want to make sure that I understand it. This contract would not expire like the other one did. This one won't expire unless, so you said it would continue as long as Fido's continues to operate.
Correct.
So does this, does this live with the proponent, or does it live with the business? So, yeah, go ahead.
It'll be registered on the title of the property. That's required by the act to do that, so it will be registered.
So it has nothing to do with the proponent? It is the building itself?
No, the contract will be with the property owner.
Right.
And the city, and then it will get registered on the title. So the proponent that actually requested it is the tenant.
Yeah.
So if she ever sells the business or someone else takes over, that will run with the property.
Gotcha. Okay. My second question, if I may. This is different than a discretionary use permit, so there is no need to poll the neighbors this time or anything like that?
Neighborhood notices will go out to anybody in a 75-meter radius.
They will again for this. Okay. Thank you.
No further questions? Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. So this will go first out, this will go out to all neighbors, and then we'll come back for second reading, second, third reading. No unfinished business? New business? Director of Leisure Services, City Employee Leisure Discount, go ahead.
Okay, so the city of Waburn strives to provide a positive work environment to all employees and elected officials in effort to offer a recognizable benefit to representatives of the city. The Leisure Services and Human Resources Departments are recommending that the attached employee discount policy, providing free drop-in access to city leisure facilities for city representatives, be adopted by city council and put into effect as of September 1st, 2022. The proposed policy will result in countless positive outcomes for employees and will act as a tool in promoting mental health and wellness as an organization. Coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic, mental health has been an increasing concern affecting staff members at home and at the workplace. It is vital that we, as an organization, do all we can to support our employees. A policy providing healthy recreational opportunities to city representatives and their families would not only provide an avenue for positive health and wellness outcomes, but would be a great step forward in employee recognition and will bear very little financial burden on the city of Waburn. So the city of Waburn currently has an active lifestyle incentive policy that allows full-time, out-of-scope, QP Local 90 and WP FFA 2989 employees 50% off registration fees for approved physical activity programs to a maximum of $200 annually. Due to the limiting restrictions within this policy, it's underutilized by the employees. For example, in 2021, only nine employees applied for the reimbursement. The employee discount policy will supplement an active lifestyle incentive policy, as it is inclusive to all employees, elected officials, and paid-on-call firefighters. Excuse me. As the city of Waburn operates largely through the means of municipal taxation, it is understood that it's not appropriate to provide financial bonuses or other monetary forms of recognition to its employees or elected officials. The city of Waburn owns and operates several leisure service facilities, which provide sport, culture, and recreation-based activities for people of all ages. It is proposed that a great way to recognize our employees, elected officials, and unpaid-on-call firefighters would be through the discounted access to those leisure facilities. This benefit would be provided to employees or elected officials at the time of hire or election, and would be in effect until no longer holding a position within the city of Waburn. The city employee discount program will also aid as a potential draw to employee recruitment and retention, as the added benefit will provide prospective staff and their family members with an increased quality of life. Moving forward, there is expected to be very little negative financial impact to operating budgets within the proposed changes, as there are currently very low number of city staff paid-on-call and elected officials holding current memberships. So we ran the numbers based off of our memberships throughout a year. About 5% of our staff hold memberships, and we currently have about 246 individuals, sorry, when I say staff, I mean individuals that would qualify for this policy, so that's staff paid-on-call firefighters and elected officials. There's also no hard costs associated with implementing the program of this nature, therefore, it will have no impacts on our facility cost recovery model or its city taxation. The city of Waburn owns and operates all municipal leisure facilities listed in the proposed discount policy, and access will be applicable to all employees paid-on-call firefighters and elected officials acting on behalf of the city of Waburn. Therefore, this would be considered a non-taxable benefit. It would leave no costs to be covered by the city or those taking advantage of the program. So to establish the framework for the proposed policy, eight other cities within Saskatchewan who offer similar-owned leisure facilities were contacted. Cities were asked for information surrounding their city staff leisure discount programs, and throughout the cities that were contacted all had a program in place. They all kind of varied to whatever fit their community, but we are recommending the full free access to our staff moving forward. So in summary of what will be provided with this discount policy, should it go through, free, non-taxable leisure services, super pass memberships for employees paid-on-call firefighters and elected officials, 50% discount on all super pass or leisure pass memberships to all family members of employees paid-on-call firefighters or elected officials, 20% off discounted, 20% discount on specialized programs, and swimming lessons and facility rentals are exempt from the policy, so those would be charged out at a rate of 100%. So it's my recommendation that the attached employee discount policy be provided to all city of Waburn employees, elected officials, and paid-on-call firefighters, as described within the policy as of September 1st, 2022.
Motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the recommendation of the Director of Leisure Services to approve the employee discount policy to be provided to all city of Waburn employees, elected officials, and paid-on-call firefighters for the city-owned recreational facilities, as described in the policy, be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? We will move forward, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Queries and announcements? Anything?
Thanks, your worship. I would just like to congratulate Monica Osborne on her appointment as the new executive director at the Waburn Chamber of Commerce and Waburn Regional Economic Development. She'd be a welcome addition to the team, so congratulations to her and both boards. You're here.
We had, go ahead, Dick. I was just going to say that we had a very successful, young fellows had a very successful, and we've heard that a lot, that the Waburn Fair was very successful. We're all surviving the heat here, the pool is up and going, correct? And so that helps us. I have had I have had numerous very compliments on the water parks on there, both on the hill and also on Douglas Heizer's, say, and the, over Don Mitchell, is really great on that, so keep proceeding along. We've got lots of water in our river thus far, and we're moving forward. We've missed a lot of the horrible storms that have gone through for our fellow communities. Some, there's been some very bad storms that have hit both Carlisle and Redvers, and up in your, what, Grenville, Grenville territory, and that, there's been some disasters out in that Lampman territory, so we've missed that. Hopefully, we'll keep missing the storms. We could use rain, but we'll keep missing. Anything else? Nothing forward. There's no notices of motion, and so we will call this meeting to adjournment. Thank you.